I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please note, we have regrets from Councillor Daniel Allen and Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. I have not heard from Councillor Lauren Cushing. Hopefully, he's all right. He may be just in traffic. Second, what are business? Land acknowledgement. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we're meeting on the traditional lands of Acadia First Nation, part of Mi'kmaq, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item number three, additions or deletions to the agenda. You all have that circulated. Is there any additions? Councillor Nick Hilton.
Thank you. Can I add Bunkers Island Community Mailbox?
Bunkers Island Community Mailbox. We'll add that under item 8.3. I'm assuming that's new business. Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Moved by Councillor Nick Hilton, seconded by Councillor Patty Durkey. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number five, if there's any declarations of conflict interest, please notify me and you'll make sure your name is recorded in the meeting minutes. Item number six, presentations. We have with us today our Communications Officer, Marissa Parker. Welcome.
Thank you.
So if I would ask you, please, that you hit the red button on your microphone and as soon as I turn it on, which is now, as soon as you're ready, you may proceed.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Council. Thank you so much for having me here today. From a communications perspective, it's been quite busy over the past few months. We have a lot of exciting initiatives and events happening this year, and so I've been busy creating various communication pieces for those events. And I'm excited to chat about some of them today, but first, I'd like to go over an overview of all of our current communication tactics that we are using in our different channels, just as a bit of a refresher and an update. So the first is social media. We're very active on our Facebook platform. It's really great. We provide a variety of content such as videos, graphics, et cetera, and updates on council, meetings, all that good stuff. What's really great about Facebook, too, is not only can people like our page, they can also follow it, which means that our content will be at the top of their feed if they do that, and it's just a faster, easier way for people to receive information from us. We're also active on the platform Instagram. Really much of the same content that we have on Facebook is also on Instagram. We don't post as frequently on Instagram as we do Facebook, but it's pretty much even. And lastly, we're active on LinkedIn, but that's really mainly only for job opportunities within the municipality, at Modi specifically. We also have our website, manyarmit.ca. We have a lot of really great information on there, from our own council to links to different communities such as Yarmouth Recreation, all that good stuff, Waste Check. And it's updated very frequently. We have items such as community notices, press releases, that all go on our website in a timely manner. Next, we have monthly update videos, and these are posted on Facebook. So essentially, at the beginning of every month, I create a video that recaps what happened in the previous month. So for example, just last week, I provided an update on what happened in February. And again, like I said, that's posted on our Facebook account. In addition to that, we also have a newsletter that's put out every, twice a year, in May and November. These are actually mailed to our residents directly, and what's really great is we have an electronic version in both French and English that's available on our website. And you can see all the past editions as well. So for example, if you wanted to know what was happening in the fall of 2015, you could go on our website and look at that newsletter. Next, we also use press releases. So these are on bigger topics that impact a greater number of people. We'll create a press release that will be posted on our Facebook page, on our Instagram, and also on our website. I also send it to various members of the media, so they can hopefully amplify our message as well. And lastly, we use both radio and print ads as needed. So radio, we would use Y95 CGLS as well as CBC, and print ads would be the Shoppers, Saltwire, and Chronicle Herald. And something new that we have implemented recently in the past couple of months is called simple texting. Essentially, it's a new and easy way for residents to receive information from us through text message. So what we have is three keywords. They include government, lighthouse, and recreation, and people can sign up by texting this keyword to our toll-free number. The number is 855-737-2186, and that information is on our website and on our social media as well. In terms of the information you would get from those keywords, if you texted government to that, to our number, you'd receive updates on changes to regular council and committee of the whole meetings. In terms of the dates and times, you'd be notified on special council meetings, public hearings, public participation meetings, readings for bylaws and policies, employment opportunities, and other important notices. For example, later this year, we'll have some notices go out about the election. For lighthouse, that has everything to do with Cape for Shoe Lighthouse, so this would include updates on events, climb the light, promotions, changes to the operating hours, as well as site closures and employment opportunities. And the keyword recreation is managed by Yarmouth Recreation, and that would include items around programming, if there were new programming opportunities, if there were cancellations, and so forth. In terms of some numbers, as of March 6th, we had 13 people sign up for government, that keyword, and 27 people for lighthouse. So we're hoping to see those numbers increase, of course, and we'll hopefully do that by posting about it more frequently, reminding our residents that this is a new option for them to be a part of. Moving on, for our website, we're actually in the process of creating an updated website through the municipal website venture. So not only will it look better and it'll be more clean, less clutter, it will also be meeting our accessibility standards for website, which is really important to us. And so we're currently working on the design phase right now. We're nearing the end of that, and soon we'll be looking at content. So we're going to look at our current website, see what content we can keep and we want to transfer to the new website, which ones we might want to add or take away as well. So work will continue on that, and hopefully we'll have the new website up in the months to come. Next, for heritage, I'm taking on the role of program rebate officer for the heritage portfolio. And one thing that has been kind of cool that I worked on was an interactive map. It's currently available on our website, on the heritage, on the heritage page, and then if you click List of Registered Properties, you'll see a map that actually has the location of all of our different properties. And what's actually pretty neat about it is it is sectioned off based off of the type of property it is. So for example, if someone went on our website and they only wanted to see our cemeteries, they could click on that and just see where our cemeteries are located in the municipality. I've also been working on a new brochure that showcases a similar-looking map, and that will be available both on our website and also at the front desk by the end of this month. And last, but definitely not least, I've been planning an event for Cape for Shoe Lighthouse. It'll be a grand opening of our look-off platform and accessible ramp. So the date has been decided for May 18th, and we're really looking forward to that. I'll be providing more details through social media in the weeks to come, and it's going to be a great event, so hopefully it will have a good turnout. And that's it for me for now. I'll open it to any questions.
Councillor Patty Durkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Marissa. That was awesome. I am thrilled with all the posts that I see coming from the municipality, and I want to say thank you also for working on a new website, because I find our website is very cluttered and very difficult to navigate, to find specific things that you are looking for. So I'm excited about having that.
Councillor Sherry Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Marissa, for your presentation. A couple of things. Simple texting. Thank you for the work that you or whoever has done. You know, sometimes we see things that happen, and you know, they just kind of magically appear, and I assume it's you, and maybe there are other people behind the scenes, but thank you to you and whoever else was responsible for that. A little disappointed on the low numbers, but hopefully over the next, you know, month or so, and as we move forward, we can get the word out that we, that that is a way to receive information. I signed up for all three, and you know, if it's something that I'm not interested in, it's a simple, you know, swipe. If it's something I'm interested in, it reminds me that I have to go and, you know, sign up for it, or maybe even promote it as a councillor, or you know, as a private, you know, as a resident, you know, something that I might be interested in as well. So I will definitely be promoting that and hope other people will be using it, too. The heritage website, I haven't had a chance to look at the upgrades to that, but I'm looking forward to taking a look at that and maybe doing a little tour myself, even though I think I know where most of them are. It would just be interesting to, you know, see how the map actually works, as you know, if I want to like drive it and, you know, do that. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any more? Thank you, Marissa, very much for your presentation. Something I've never heard of before was simple texting. I don't know, I only have one social media page, and that's Facebook, and I find that hard in itself just to manage sometimes, but actually, it's something. So the way that you get signed up for that is you text either government, lighthouse, and recreation to that number, 855-373-2186?
It's 855-737-2186.
Oh, yeah. Dislexia strikes again.
Yeah, it's as easy as that, just sending the key message or the keyword to that number.
So when we sign up to that, so do we get sent anything and everything that the municipality puts out in regards to recreation, or just things that we specifically want to look at?
Exactly. So it depends on which keyword you use. I provided the different updates that we do for government and lighthouse. For recreation, you'd have to check on Yarmouth Rec's website and/or Facebook for the full list of updates that they would provide, but what I have said for government and lighthouse are the only updates that you would receive.
So if you wanted all three, do you do them separately, or do you type in all those three words?
You do it separately. So you do government, press send, then recreation, send, lighthouse, send.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I'm not, I didn't, wasn't sure how that works, but thank you very much for your presentation. Moving on to item number seven, old business, request for decision, 2024 municipal election, source of primary electors list. With us today, we have Mr. Dean Fuller. He is a returning officer for our next upcoming municipal election. Thank you, Dean, very much for coming before council, and the floor is yours.
Okay. I think I'm on here. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, councillors. I'm glad to be able to be here. This is just a very basic piece of the election puzzle. The Nova Scotia Municipal Election Act requires that by April 15th on election year, that council makes a decision on where the preliminary list of electors will source from. And essentially, there are four choices. You can do an enumeration, you can get a voter's list from the latest federal election or a voter's list from the latest provincial election, or a register, which is a live list that keeps getting updated as information comes in, and you can get that either from the federal or provincial election authorities. So the recommendation is that last election, we used the voter register from the Nova Scotia Provincial Government.
Hey, thank you very much, Dean. Questions? What is council's pleasure? Councillor Sherry Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Make a motion, but then I have a couple of questions. Make a motion that we recommend to regular council that we use any, we use the permanent register of electors established and maintained for use, and you said the provincial, the provincial election.
Okay, a motion on the floor, I have a second there. Seconded by Councillor Nick Hilton. Councillor?
Doesn't matter.
Councillor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I have one question. Thanks, Dean, and thanks for joining us again. The question I have is, we have a lot of new people who have moved to Yarmouth County. What would they need to do to make sure that they are on the voter's list?
Right. Well, we certainly will have lots of public communications, we'll have, you know, the website, we'll be engaging Marissa to make sure we get that out there, that we are ready to revise the list, and it's, you know, we can do that very simply. So we know that there's a lot of people, but, so we will provide avenues to do that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Councillor Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for, welcome back, I should say. Councillor Durkey asked one of my questions, but the other one is, is there a possibility for us to get us, meaning the council and the public, a timeline of when things happen so we know when the, when this particular list happens, when we know communication will start, when people, if they want to sign up to, you know, run for municipal council, when they can do that? Is there a way that we can kind of cobble together, or maybe there has been one in the past that we could?
Well, I certainly have like my internal timeline for that, but I think that's a great idea. We're certainly going to advertise those stages as they come up, but I think it's a good idea to publish sort of a rough timeframe, so people will know.
Okay, that would be great. And not necessarily specific, you know, March 15th this will happen, but you know, March-ish, April-ish, these are the things, or even just the order that things happen, so that the public are aware of how things, how things work.
Sure. I think to add to that, if I could, Mr. Chair. Yep, it's on. Elections Nova Scotia supports the municipal elections by actually publishing a calendar of all those key dates, and then there could be additional items that we would fill in that are nuanced for the general election in Modi.
Awesome. Thank you. Councillor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to either Dean or our CAO, there has been a lot of questions, of course, about electronic voting and paper ballots. Can, we just have a quick update as to what are the checks and balances that are used with electronic voting to ensure that no fraud is being committed?
Okay, I can, I can respond to that. We've, we've used them in the past. We haven't decided on who our supplier will be, but the previous supplier that we had does have a very robust backend security. We also locally do auditing of the voting, so we can, we audit, we can do voting, which are not counted, to make sure they're going where they're supposed to be, that there's no glitches and everything's working fine. So, you know, that's the two big things. The provision of electronic voting, certainly with a company that we've used in the past, has really broadened out in, across, especially in Ontario. There's many, many municipalities using them. Even the federal, the Conservative and the Liberal Party are using that same provider to do their leadership votes. So they have a robust system, and we do have a hand in monitoring and auditing it. And there are other ways of auditing to ensure that excessive voting's not taking place in one area. So I just, I won't explain that, but it's there. So there are, there are checks and balances.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I add to that a little bit, Mr. Chair? So one of the requirements on electronic voting is a supplier has to meet certain standards that are required for information protection and things like that in Canada. So every, every supplier of this sort of service has a backend security section. And to answer your question, the provider we used last time has a role called auditor. So that person has, is an independent third party, so that person does not work for the service provider. That person typically does not work for the municipality. That person is typically not on the election staff. Their role is to provide oversight, to make sure that there is not excessive voting from any one particular location. They can cast audit votes to test the system, to make sure that the system works. They can cast those votes electronically or by telephone. They, they have their own set of credentials to get into the system, and they can access the entire system to make sure, from beginning to end, from voter's list all the way to the other end, that there are no anomalies in the system. So that's built into that system, and it would be very similar to a scrutineer who would work at a poll to ensure that there is no election interference in a traditional paper ballot.
Thank you both. Just one further question, I guess what, that, I guess one of the concerns would be if you get your number and you key in your number and you have to put in your birthday. Who's to prevent someone from going up and saying, you know, give me your number and your birthdate and I'll vote for you? So what would happen in that case is if someone was doing that, they would see that there was, it was coming from one ISP number or one phone number, correct? That someone was actually doing that type of thing? Would they see that?
So anomalies could happen. So if it's a landline and, you know, two or three people are voting from the same landline, well, most households have 2.3 people in them, so that's not an anomaly.
Okay.
What you just described, there are, there are laws around elections tampering and elections fraud and things like that. So if somebody was, whether it was with a paper ballot or a telephone ballot or an electronic ballot, if they did not meet the criteria for what we call friend voting, then that's election fraud, and that's up to the RCMP.
Thank you for your explanation.
Councillor Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just to get a better understanding and clarification, am I in the understanding that electronic voting can't be compromised?
Yeah, we are getting a little bit off of the motion that's on the floor. It's not an agenda item.
Well, I don't, excuse me, but I think it's, we're talking about, Councillor Durkey brought up about electronic voting and paper ballot voting, and I'm just trying to follow up with that.
Well, I'll, there's one last question, and then after that. Go ahead.
I'll respond to that. I mean, councillor, there obviously, in this world, there are things that can happen where electronic systems can be compromised right from the highest ends of government down to whatever. The thing is, is that the system is built that if there's a compromise, the system shuts down, you know, there's no more voting at that moment. And they, they know, these companies know that that's the single most important thing that they have to do. So they, there are checks and balances as the CAO has said, and like, like I said, that is there, to actually put on the election and to have all the pieces in the software to put the votes where they have to go, that's fairly straightforward, but to have the security that makes it something that is viable for them to do, it has to be very robust. And they have to satisfy us that it is very robust.
Thank you. And I won't ask any more questions on that. Thank you.
All right, council, there is a motion on the floor in regards to the permanent register of electors that we're going to be using the provincial list. Is any more questions particular to that? Hearing none, motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item 7.2, Assistant Returning Officer, request for decision.
I'll start. My name is on it, but Dean is still here in case there are questions as a returning officer. So one of the roles in delivering a general municipal election is Assistant Returning Officer, and that person's role is to support the returning officer, but also to act in the event that their returning officer can't fulfill their duties. Normally, excuse me, that's a staff person, and traditionally, the District of Yarmouth has deferred that to administration to make the decision under the Municipal Elections Act. Council has to specifically decide if they want to do that. So in your package is a recommendation under Section 41A of the Municipal Elections Act, pursuant to Section 41C, defer the authority to appoint the Assistant Returning Officer to the Chief Administrative Officer.
Councillor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just a question through you to the CAO. I would assume that we would be going the same direction as we did last time, maybe, maybe looking for the same, someone with the same, the experience that they gained from the last election? Would that be?
Yes, that's right. Yep.
Okay, so I'll make that a motion.
Any motion on the floor? Do I have a second there? Seconded by Councillor Sherry Hurlberg. Discussion on that? Discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Item eight, new business, 8.1, the draft sewer bylaw S-084-24. We have with us Darlene LeBlanc, the Deputy CAO. I'll turn on your microphone. You have the floor.
Okay. So the first one's the sewer bylaw. This came about because we started looking at the South Ohio Waste Water Management bylaw to make some, some proposed amendments there, and we realized that there were a lot of commonalities between the two bylaws, and it made sense to combine the two. So that's where this came from. So as you'll see, part 13 on page eight, excuse me, page eight, is the, the main change that's being made, is just the addition of the South Ohio Waste Water Management District, a description of that, and most of the rest of the bylaw applies to both sewer systems. There's also an appendix with a map of the South Ohio Waste Water Management District that's been added.
So this is basically to take two bylaws and make them into one, correct?
Yes.
So instead of the, what was it called? The South Ohio Waste Management District and, I can't remember the name of the other one, that's just to combine the two, rather than having two bylaws that people would be wondering if they'd have, if they fall under this one or that one? This is just taking those two and combining them into one?
That's correct.
Councillor Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this is just a motion to move to first reading. Is there first reading on an amendment like this?
Recommend the first.
Yeah. Recommend to council that we move sewer bylaw S-084-24 for first reading at regular council.
Okay, motion on the floor, seconded by Councillor Patty Durkey. Any discussion on that? Councillor Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Darlene, for this. And so I assume after this is done, then we repeal the South Ohio?
There's a section in this bylaw that repeals that one.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have to do that separately.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item 8.2, draft council procedural policy C-028-19.
The amendment that's being recommended there is part 10.2.5. I'll tell you the page number in a second. Nine? Okay, page nine. And that was to add a section, just confirming that approved minutes are the only official record of the meetings.
Councillor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments to the council procedural policy C-028-19 as presented.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded? Yeah, it's recommend the regular council. Seconded by Councillor Lauren Cushing. Discussion on that? I guess I have one quick question in that regard. There is a temporary thing that council made a motion for in regards to public, public presentations, and that item would be number, sorry, public comments, item 10. So that, if I remember correctly, that was only for a temporary basis for this council term, correct, Madam CAO?
My understanding of the resolution is that we're in a trial period on that, and then after the general election, the sitting council will review it and make a decision on whether or not they want to amend their standard agenda and make it permanent.
And that's where this would, that's where that would?
This policy would require revision. Yes, Mr. Chair.
But it's only a temporary resolution?
Right. That's why that amendment is not in your package today.
Is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, item 8.3, this was an addition, Bunkers Island Community Mailbox. Councillor Nick Hilton, you had asked to have this on the agenda. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the past few months, especially before the time change, I've received multiple complaints from residents about their safety when picking up their mail at their community mailbox on Bunkers Island Road, there being no streetlight being the main reason. main reason. And we know that some of the visitors to Bunkers Island all hours of the day, that traffic speed, some other probably illegal activities. Yeah, so the residents in Chaboga are asking specifically for a street light, and I know that the federal government, who kind of owns the mailboxes, I know in their standards, there's no requirement for lighting. But I know that this is an ongoing safety problem. So I guess I would kind of like to make a motion, or I will make a motion to recommend a regular council, that we ask the CIO and Public Works, as per the street lighting bylaw, there's a provision in there that allows them to look at all exceptions to the street lighting policy and make a recommendation for them to bring back maybe a briefing note on what could be done to improve the safety and a possible street light in that location to a future council meeting.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey. Discussion on that motion on the floor. I got to pull up the municipal street light policy. So, to be clear, Counselor Hilton, you're asking staff to go back and revisit that policy to make... I'll turn this back on.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, there is a provision at the end of the street light policy that allows the CIO and Public Works Department to make recommendations for other areas that, I believe, that other areas that may be of concern, that may require a street light. So it's already in there. And, you know, it talks about public spaces in there, I believe, as well. And a community mailbox is a strange public space, but it is.
All right, thank you very much, Counselor. Since this was a quick addition to the thing, I didn't have time to read through the policy to make sure. But however, I'm in favor of the motion that you placed there, because it's only asking staff to come back at a future council meeting to make a report. So I'm fine with that. Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counselor Hilton, for bringing that up. I do know that there has been illegal dumping in that area, so that might help prevent that. And one day, a friend of mine went to get his mail, and there was someone having an illegal dump, literally. So that might prevent that from happening in that public space as well.
Thank you very much. Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, 9.1 for Action, 9.1.1, Recommended Amendment to the Land Use Bylaw. You all have that in your package. This comes from our last regular council meeting, and a question that was posed to council on the previous agenda. What is council's wishes? Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Betty for submitting these recommendations. It's exactly what we have kind of been asking for a process, and knowing that the bylaws are always able to be changed at any time. So this was the right avenue, and I appreciate that. And I do have some concerns about adding some of the language, because once we do such a, do, once we add that language to our bylaws, if the province ever changes their writing, we would sometimes be, we would have two different sets of bylaws, and something that's not specifically, you know, a rule that we follow. But saying that, I would recommend that we move this letter to the PAC for staff in the PSE to make a recommendation.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, to echo Counselor Hilton's remarks, you know, thank you to Betty for submitting this, this request and these questions. One of my questions would be, and I'm not sure how this goes to PAC, but I feel like within this particular possible revision or something to look at, I would like to know what is municipal and does our, you know, our bylaw is clear that this is a municipal thing, or that this is coming from the provincial government. So, you know, for the PAC, when they're reviewing this, to make it clear that, and I'm fairly certain that our, you know, municipal planning strategy land use bylaw is clear, but if there is a way to make things clearer as to what is provincially mandated versus what is municipal, would be helpful. And, you know, to Counselor Hilton's point, we don't want to be revising something that the province can then revise, and then we have to come back and revise it. So maybe if there's a way that the PAC can look at it and maybe make some language clearer, or an explanation as to why this is there versus something else, I think it would be helpful.
That's right. That would be up to the PAC members that sits on council to bring that forward to them.
Yep. Okay.
I do attend a lot of the PAC meetings, not necessarily in person, but they do have them online. I think that's, I think that's a proper question. And also there, if there's any questions of the PAC members, that it also be referred to legal, if it had any legal ramifications. And I think that's where all the legwork of council would be done in regards to any planning documents. I guess this is related to the motion that's currently on the floor, and I'm going to have to ask the CIO. Since we recently passed our MPS and LUB, has a province given their okay to the documents?
Yep, it's been submitted to the Director of Planning, who gave approval.
Okay, so the documents that are currently online, so now...
They're in force.
Okay. It was just sort of a, something that was on my mind, because I don't remember seeing any correspondence coming through in that regard. Counselor Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think you answered some of the questions I was going to ask. This has to be brought back to the PAC, which we all know that now, and it's, and be reviewed at that time. So if it can be changed, it certainly will. If it can't, it won't be. And if we need legal advice, we will, we will reach out for that. So I guess I have no further comments on it, because you asked, you answered most of, or asked most of the questions that I was going to ask anyway. So, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much. Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item 9.1.2, Hillside Drive, Hebron Baptist Community Playground. Boy, why that tongue-tied me? I'll never know. What is, wishes the council. This was a letter from Chair Liz Noble of the Hebron... My apologies for making a mockery of this word for some reason. For some reason, I get tongue-tied on some things, and this just happens to be one word. The Hebron Baptist Community Playground. There's a question in there in regards to our consideration and understanding of accessing the playground on Hebron One Sidewalk. Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Liz, for submitting the letter and the photo. I think the photo really kind of quantifies some of the issues, the amount of water there. It's almost impassable. To be honest, I don't know what motion needs to be made. I kind of go through the chair and ask staff what recommendations could be made, because I know that we have had Hillside Drive on our top three J-Class roads submitted to the province for the last two years, for them to recognize that and partner with us to have it repaved, which ultimately would be the solution to the problem. You know, we can explore sidewalks, but we know that they are the most expensive thing we do as a council. And, you know, those are all options. But really, the road needs to be fixed, and the province needs to be on board for that. And we need our MLA, Zach Churchill, to push this forward. So maybe the CIO, if you had a couple recommendations that would be appreciated on where to direct this. Madam CIO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counselor Hilton, and thank you to the community for raising the concern. So there are a couple of ways that the municipality can look to see what help it can provide. So obviously, the first and best recourse would be to receive funding through the J-Class Road Program to make upgrades to that road. And to the point in the letter, you know, if the road surface is going to get upgraded, one of the issues is the actual width of the travelway. So to have a conversation about some extra volume of space to just maybe push out just a little bit more for people who, because that's a walkable road, so for people who walk the road. In the meantime, while we're waiting for that, council have directed the team to go away and look at active transportation across the community, and make some recommendations to council on how to strategically build active transportation infrastructure across the municipality. And so I would think that situations like this in communities would be considered in the scope of work, because one of the goals of building sidewalks and trails is to create safety for pedestrians and encourage active, healthy living. So when we know about situations like this in the community, you know, they need to be on the table to be considered, you know, are they a priority, and should there be a project there? So I think two things, I think we definitely push for this road in the J-Class program, but we also put it on the table for consideration in the master plan.
Counselor Hilton.
Just one follow-up question to the CIO. The amount of water in that photo, clearly there's a drainage issue. Does that fall on our Public Works, Works or Department of Transportation?
I'm not sure where the manholes are there. But having said that, even though there's a sidewalk along Highway One, the stormwater management system is not the municipal responsibility. So I'm not sure if there is a manhole, but either way, it wouldn't be a municipal Public Works issue. We could ask our team to find the nearest manhole and report it, and ask that the province go take a peek at it. If there is a manhole or a drainage system there, and it's clogged with leaves or something, we could point it out and report it.
So would a letter to Zach and Department of Transportation be in order here to, including the photo, to maybe push to identify some of the concerns here, and the fact that it's on our list and hasn't been addressed?
Maybe I could check in with my contact at the department, because the adjudication of the J-Class projects hasn't been received yet. We haven't been notified yet if we have been awarded our submission from last fall. So if there's an appetite, let me check on that first, and then I'll report for council at the end of the month. And if we still have, don't have any information, then council can move forward in whichever way they want on that piece.
So can we bring this letter forward to the end-of-the-month meeting for that update?
That would be the cleanest way, Counsel Hilton, in case something, at least it's on the books that staff was to come back with in regards to report, and then council can either move forward on any recommendations or anything like that. And it also makes it cleaner, so something doesn't fall through the cracks.
So do you want that as a motion to bring to the March regular council meeting, along with the staff update?
Correct.
So moved.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Sheri Hurlberg.
And I...
You still have the floor, Counselor Hilton.
Thank you. I just want to be clear to Liz. I know that you've addressed this concern. Sorry, I can't speak directly to you, but I want the community to know that we've addressed, this concern's been brought up a couple times. And I feel like we've tried to address it as a council in the avenues that we have, and we're still trying, but we need to push a little harder to get in, to get some answers. So we'll see what the end of the month brings.
Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Nick asked a lot of the questions I was going to ask, and the main thing is that I can see it's a drainage problem right now, and I agree that we should be looking into it. But before we start jumping through too many hoops, let's get our Public Works team to enter, if it's okay with the CIO, just to take a look and see what the problem is. And then you can reach out to the Public Works and MLAs and just see what's going on. Is that correct, or?
Madam CIO?
Yeah.
So that's not the type of question that I'd like to get, because it's not our asset, it's not our responsibility, it's not our right of way.
Okay.
I think what we could do is try to identify, like I said, if there is a manhole there and if it's clogged.
Yes.
And then pass that on to the call center.
Yes.
I think we can absolutely do that much.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Sheri Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counselor Hilton, for those, for that motion, and to the CIO for the recommendation, you know, on how to proceed with this. Is it my understanding that the list that we got back over the last couple of years, that this particular road, we know that it's been on, but is it my understanding that it's fallen down the list by the province? I'm not sure. Maybe that can be something we can, you know, that you can look at for the end of the month. And I also would implore any resident who has a concern about this to contact their local MLA.
I would say that, but also there's another avenue that you can reach out. That's, I've been referring a lot of people to in regards to provincial road issues, and that includes dirt roads, which we've heard a lot of issues about, is Department of Public Works-OCC.novascotia.ca. The phone number, I can't remember all of it, is 1-866, and I'll speak that out as soon as, since you have the floor, and I do know Counselor Durkey has it all, spit that number out after Counselor Durkey is done speaking.
And it's fine for the CIO, maybe, you know, in the report at the end of the month, just to find out, like, how that has kind of played out over the last three years. I don't expect you to find that on your fingertips right now, but for the end of the month would be great.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Counselor Hurlberg. We do have an issue with the last list of J-Class roads that were submitted. Hector Street was on that list, and it hasn't gotten done yet either, because according to transportation, they ran out of money, so they just pushed it down the list. Not our list, it's still sitting there, I think just in general. And that number is 1-800-696-7737.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One more thing while we're handing out numbers. If you Google Department of Public Works Complaints, it's the very first thing that pops up. So not our Public Works, Provincial Public Works, but Department of Public Works Complaints, the number's right there.
One more thing. I do know that this road has been on the lists that we submit to the province every year, and with any hopes at all, I do know that the province has allocated some more money in regards to fixing up secondary roads, including J-Class roads, which this is. And hopefully, we'll be a little bit more successful than rather than getting one or none. It's been very trying to try to get people's concerns about provincially-owned roads on their radar. But we'll see what happens. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. So I'll expect to see that on the next regular council agenda the end of the month. There's no items for information, 9.2. Item number 10, Public Comments. We have one on our list. Please remember that the comments be within the purview of the municipal government. Comments be directed to council as a whole, not to staff or individual counselors. If you have any written questions, please direct it to me, and then I'll make sure that it's handled in the appropriate way. And other than that, we have one person on our list, Mr. Ron Cox. Your microphone is on, so as soon as you sit down, start to speak, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you.
Okay. I have a plan, or a proposal, or an idea I would like to submit to council. I call it the 10-10 solution, or 10-10 plan. And I'll explain in a minute, or it'll become obvious why I've called it that. But first, I'd like to... But first, I'd like to remind everybody of something I think they're well aware of, that a lot of the people in the municipality are suffering financially. There's an inflation issue raging across our country. People are having a problem with rising costs just filling up the gas tank on their truck or their car. People are having problems putting groceries on their table, feeding their families. People are having problems heating their house because fuel and energy is going up. And right in the middle of this financial storm, they were hit with a raise or a rise in their assessment on their properties. So, we know that this is a problem. I'm going to suggest that the possible solution to this is that you consider cutting the tax rate, not the assessment, but the tax rate, 10%. Right now, and this would be all taxes, so I'm talking about residential taxes, commercial taxes, taxes on farmland, 10%, every, every, every one of those. Right now, I think the residential tax rate is something like $1.69 per $100 of assessed value. If you cut it 10%, that would be $1.52 approximately. So, it would be helpful. In addition to that, because I said this was a 10-10 plan, the second part of that name, I'd ask that the council cut their spending 10% as well going forward. So, that's where the 10-10 comes in. 10% cut in the tax rate, 10% cut in spending. Now, remember that the people in the municipality of Yarmouth are having to deal with cutting costs day in, day out, and there's no way that the council can really remain aloof from this reality, which is impacting everybody in all of your constituents, basically. So, to wrap this up, we all know the problem. The big question is, are we gonna do anything about it? And I'd ask you to give it serious consideration, 10% cut on the tax rate, 10% cut on the spending of the council, and I look forward to your response at some point. I do have this basically in a written form, a copy for everybody, which I'll give you later. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ron. Ron was the only one that asked to be in the public comments section, so we'll move on to item number 11. Before we do that, I'd entertain a motion for a five-minute recess before we go into camera. Moved by Counselor Nick Hilton, seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey for a 10-minute, sorry. Did I say 10 or 5?
Aye.
Okay, I did say 5. Just making sure not to confuse the recording secretary. So, a motion on the floor to recess for 5 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.